I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order if the clerk would take the, well, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. The clerk would take the role place?
Commissioner McConnel.
Here.
Commissioner Tanyan.
Commissioner Heidman.
Here.
Commissioner Ball.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Chairman Freitas.
Here. Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, at this time I'd move to move items 3A and 3B to items 11G and 11H in the new business section.
Support.
Motion to support, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agendas and support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of the previous meetings?
I make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the January 18, 2018 Commission Meeting and the February 1, 2018 Standing Committee Meeting.
Support.
Having a motion to support on the minutes, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any proclamations? I don't believe we have any. Consent agenda, items A through F, I will not read all of those. If somebody wants to see them, I'll show them to you, but we're not going to read them all, so we'll take the whole batch at once.
This time I'd like to move to approve items 7A through 7F on the consent agenda.
Support.
Any discussion? Anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Hearing, none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of standing and special committees. Commissioner McConnell, let's start down at the west end.
I'm just going to take a pass. Other than, we were at the Cranes event this morning and it was a marvelous exposure. Maybe that's not the word. It was, it was very good to hear the people talk. It was good to see the amount of people that were in the crowd. I think it was a, I think it was a huge plus for the blue meets green. I know Jeff spends a ton of time with that kind of stuff, but it just, it's very impressive when you see the collaboration that goes on with, with the different groups and when you have the private and public sectors working together, it's one of the best forms that I've seen conceptuality wise. A lot of people try to do that. This, this group seems to have really hit home runs with, with what they're looking in. Fortunately, St. Clair County is the beneficiary of a lot of it and we're very fortunate.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Heidman?
Several things. First of all, we had our Park and Rec meeting and I can tell you that there are some business plans that are out there. Maybe you've seen them. They, I assume they were shipped out.
Yeah, we can discuss that.
There are a couple parks that we still need to work on, business plans. The individual that heads up the finance committee would like to spend more time, but he's not quite retired yet. He said, "Give him another year and, and then he'll go at it full tilt." I also, as you know, I chaired the Michigan Association of Counties Finance Committee and we met over in Lansing and I know you people. Jeff's been around for a long time, so he's heard me talk about this. Proposal A and Headley Amendment and, and the impact it has, and the impact it has on, on communities. And quite frankly, after reading it and, and seeing the situation in St. Clair County, we're in pretty good shape in terms of the impact. Not what we'd like, but we're, some of these communities are just, they're, they're never going to get back to getting revenue in per capita base, you know, as dollars inflate value. They're never going to get back to $2,008. They're never. I mean, how are they going to provide basic county services, you know, whether it's police or, or courts or whatever? It's scary. Anyway, they did a fairly extensive thing on, on that. If you're interested, I definitely will share that with you. The other thing we did, we talked about the governor's proposal to add the $4.75, is it Jeff?
Yep, $4.75.
And, and here's the problem, just so you have some idea. Michigan, according to the DEQ, has 3,000 contaminated sites without funding in the state. And so they're obviously trying to find a source for that funding to deal with them. St. Clair County has 29 sites in the county. Whether that's a, a, a gas station that the tanks were in and leaking and they just abandoned the whole thing and, and left the state with the, the problem. But anyway, so that's part of that. And then they also are promoting the effect, the impact on public health. They had 18% of the beaches experienced closures in 2017. Drinking water systems lose 10 to 50% of the drinking water because of leakage in the systems. And since 2008, an average of 13 billion gallons of untreated sewage flow into Michigan's waterways. So they're, they're wanting to, to deal with that. In terms of St. Clair County, if that tipping fee were to be increased, according to this, now maybe I better back up on, but anyway, they're, they're doing an all-out push to, to try to get that fee through so they can.
Is this a tipping tax or a tipping fee?
A tipping fee for every ton.
Right. Tipping tax, right? We collect, we collect and pay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But fees aren't taxed. Wink, wink.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. That, that was me.
Anything else? Commissioner Heidman?
And then I would like to comment the excellent job that Jeff Bohm did, our county chair, at the, at the Cranes meeting today. Outstanding job.
Howard, can I ask one question? When you said the one gentleman is, has not retired yet and once he does, he'll have more time, is this one of the board members?
Yes, on Park and Rec. He's one year away from retirement.
But aren't, aren't we going to be getting these projections? We wouldn't want them coming from a board member. Wouldn't we want them coming from somebody in finance that's, isn't that what we're looking for? Is what our daily, what our yearly expenditures and everything are?
There, there's a format that they use apparently for building a, a business plan and to put that whole thing together and draw all the, the data. Before, we even started working on this, which was, how many years ago did we start working on business plans? Asking for them?
Yeah, I have been for over five years.
Over five years?
And what I, what I want to say, Howard, is that he's been given specific instructions and we've talked about this, but business plans that he has given to us does not give us the information that we need to maintain our parks. Tells us the expenditures, what type of people are there that count, and we're going to maintain the 59 buildings in our, all our parks. We don't have any figures. The business plans he got are very insufficient. It's fine to have paperwork and say, "Here's your business plan," but that's not what we've been asking for, for years.
Okay, but back up a second. Prior to our request for business plans for each of the parks, prior to that, it was all put in one pot and spent. And we had no clue how any.
Right, and that's why I'm asking. But this person that's on the board isn't going to be able to dissect that. We need somebody like Danielle probably to help us more, right? And I'm not saying Danielle. I'm saying somebody in accounting that.
That would be very helpful.
Very good. Moving on, Commissioner Bohm.
I got a couple things, just to talk a little bit more about that, the trash piece, Howard. The governor's proposals, $4.75 per ton. It's currently at 36 cents per ton, which would be a $4.37 increase. Just so people in the audience and kind of understand, the average household produces about one and a quarter tons of trash in the course of a year. Matt Williams has, I asked Matt to draft a letter up to let all the townships, cities, villages know that this potential is coming down the pipeline, okay? Because a lot of times what happens with the townships, they ask for, you know, "What's, what's it going to cost me budgeting?" And everybody has a different mechanism. Some of the cities pay for all the trash. Some of them pay, you know, the individual homeowners, they just bill them for those types of things. So that's, they're not all on one way of how they deal with their trash issues. So Matt sent that letter out so at least they know that there's a potential that this could come that would, you know, affect them and be it through the budgeting process. So for an average household, we're talking about six bucks a year, doesn't sound like a lot, but depending if you're a city, how much it costs, you know, the city of Marysville, for example, they're 3,800. Tons of trash is what they produce. So you do the math, you know, four, you know, times so on and so forth. So those letters are out. People are on notice. We had a conference call the other day with a bunch of the township officials and city officials met and we just kind of explained a little bit of that. Crane's event, some of the commissioners were there. Crane's is, you know, it's the big publication that's extremely well-read throughout the state. It's kind of the quasi-business publication that a lot of people read. Five years ago, four years ago, Crane's never covered us, never looked at us, never talked to us for whatever reasons. Got to give a lot of credit for Randy Fernandez originally reaching out to them, setting up an initial meeting to bring them to St. Clair County to talk about a lot of the different things that we had going on. Hence, here we are. This is year four dealing with them. We were able to put, Crane's picked us as one of the four spots throughout the state of Michigan to go out and do this statewide rollout on some of the things that they had, you know, talked about today. They were hoping for 100 people. We had 300 there today. Talked a lot about a lot of the good things, obviously, going in the area. Some of the other things we've got to work on. There's a lot of branding discussions, you know, so on and so forth, which are fluid. But to be able to have them recognizing us, covering us in these other things is really says, speaks volumes about how far we've come from not being in the discussion to hence being in the discussion today. So I appreciate the attendance. The Edison Plant, MPSC sometime in April is going to be ruling on the new plant down in East China. We had a meeting the other day with a reporter and we talked extensively about, because some of the pushback on the plant, it's not 100% done deal yet. I just want to say that. A lot of pushback is there's a feeling that they can put the additional power back in alternative energy measures between windmills, solars, types of things. Currently, the state's at 10%. They moved the bar to 15. I know a fair amount about alternative energy and to try to get an additional 30% of reliable power in solar and wind, it ain't going to happen, okay? Because we're even running into issues that you may be able to put windmills in particular areas, but as we are seeing right now and certain townships are opting out against them. Just because you can put a map up on the state of Michigan and say, "Okay, we're going to put this, 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 this is, you know, we're going to put all these things here. It's going to generate, you know, X amount of power." But the fact of the matter is, a lot of the townships are not opting in for those measures, right? Same with solar. So to have reliable power for the grid and consistent is really what, that's Edison's pitch. I feel pretty confident that's going to happen. We're going to obviously continue to see renewables, but to think you're going to get there with that, it's, it's just, they're not there yet, you know, technology.
Just a question, Jeff. Do you see the same kind of pushback from townships with solar that you see with wind?
Haven't, the whole new solar thing just kind of has really come front and center. I did talk to the, we had a meeting in Lapeer the other day just to discuss some stuff. I did talk to the city manager of Lapeer yesterday, Dale Kerbison, who's ironically from this area originally, on that big 200-acre solar farm that they have located about, located along 69. That has an $80 million SEV. That was land that the city of Lapeer owned that was essentially crap land for them. He'll tell you that. Not real developable. They were able to put that solar facility in there. They worked an agreement out for a period of time where it doesn't go down. It doesn't go from 80 million to zero. It's a set payout for, for forever. And the city of Lapeer is receiving a $500,000 a year taxing benefit off of that. Now, granted, I think they got a sweetheart deal. I don't know if those deals exist, you know, going, moving forward. And really, you know, DTE will tell you, they got into solar just because they need it to be into the solar business, right? I think there's probably going to be less pushback, you know, in the solar thing. But still, to produce the Edison Plant's 1,100 acres, so it takes 10 acres to produce 2 megawatts of power. That Edison Plant that they're looking to rebuild, I should say DTE Energy, I always still refer to it as Edison, is 1,100 megawatts. So do the math at how many acres of, just to produce. And there again, reliable, consistent. Sun don't shine, you're making power, right? So, so there's still, you know, there's still a little bit of a ways away on that, but we are fortunate in St. Clair County to, to have tremendous amount of infrastructure down there. We've got plenty of gas capacity, plenty of transmission.
We've got the transmission.
We've got everything and, and as you guys, I sound like a broken record, but DTE is 12% of our entire SEV in St. Clair County. 12% of our entire tax base in the county is DTE properties. That's how substantial. You lose power plants? I think I had, I shared that article with, if, if you don't get your power plant back, what do you do? I said you cry, because that's how much you lose in taxable value.
And it isn't just the county. It's, it's the school district. It's the college.
It's huge. It's, it's crazy big, the amount of money that they pay. So going to keep working. We've been out assisting them somewhat, I guess, talking on, you know, on some of these other fronts, but, so we'll know more in April. Keep our fingers crossed, you know? Just because that announcement was made does not mean, still has to get MPSC approval.
That's it?
That's it.
I want to add to what you're saying, throw a little bit of a wrench in here. There is a petition underway to put on the ballot to force these energy companies to go to 30%. I don't know what that would do to all the calculations that you got figured out there, but you go from 15% to 30% and they've already tapped a lot of it that they can tap. I don't know where they're also going to get another 15%, but there is a citizens group out there with a petition to force them to go to 30%. And if they get the 300 and some odd thousand signatures statewide, it'll be on the ballot for a vote. So.
Yeah. I would give you that. Don't always ask what you wish for, because the cost of windmills and solar, make it no mistake, is heavily, heavily subsidized. It's on your bill.
Very good. Commissioner Dunn?
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I agree. I was at the Cranes event today and it was very well put together, thanks Jeff and the whole group, but very well attended. I didn't know what to expect going in and I was very, very surprised, very impressed.
Very good. Commissioner Rushing?
I have three things. You know, two weeks ago, we had the railroad light guy that had it stolen on his property. Contacted and talked with the newspaper the following day and you know it has a happy ending. It made the paper and somebody else donated a light and he's got a light and it's been resolved as far as getting him another light. Newspaper contacted me and then of course they contacted him and they worked it all out and he got his light replaced. On the trash, special assessment, I believe we have 31 municipal counties or, I mean.
Municipalities.
Community what?
Municipalities.
Municipalities within the county. And with Riley Township, many of the townships, they have special assessments. So what they do, they contract with the specific trash hauler and they have all the cost. If this goes through, potentially if they can't come up with a special assessment that the residents will approve, then it'll go back to, like Wales Township has, they have no special assessment. They, just each individual homeowner contracts with the trash hauler. Marysville, when you've got Cochtraville, that contracts with the county. Of course, then at that point, then we've got to put that cost under the township. But, so there's different scenarios that are going to happen as this goes forward. On the alternative energy, Berlin Township is going to be on our planning commission meeting Monday night in regards to the windmills. So they want some guidance on what we did in Riley Township, but that's going forward to Berlin Township. That's all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Just a short piece. Commissioner McConnell, myself went to emergency services to a project called Black Sky Project. And that's, that's a point where you lose power for a number of days. Those of you that are old enough, all of you look like you are, a number of years ago, we lost power for several days. Countywide, it was, whole eastern seaboard went out. And I don't remember the number of days. We went four or five days, but we can go that far. But our emergency services group took it further out and they went out to like day 15. And we had a bunch of people sitting around talking about how this is going to shake out. And the number one thing that we needed more than anything else was fuel. That was the one thing that was decided, that you need fuel. You need fuel to run your generators, to do this, to get places, to do everything you need to do. You needed fuel. If you want to go to the store and you need gas in your car, you know, so fuel was the number one thing that we needed. And the, the question came up about the hospitals. Port Huron, McLaren can run, I think they have seven days of fuel. And I think Great, or Lake Huron Medical has four days. Greg, does that sound about right?
Yes.
They, they have that onsite. They have that much diesel fuel to run their generators. So you can run four days or seven days. We talked in terms of why can't we put natural gas generators in there? Because we had the natural gas people in the audience and they were saying things like, "All it takes is a little tiny Honda generator to get enough power to run our electronics and open our valves and you can have gas for almost ever." So we thought we would look at trying to switch those guys over. There's a, state fire marshal has adopted a federal code that if you're going to have at a hospital and some other facilities, you must have a certain amount of fuel onsite. Natural gas is not stored onsite. So let's say they require you to have three days. So we got one with four, one with seven, but at the end of four or seven, if they're out of fuel, how are they going to get more fuel if you don't have fuel to get the fuel? And so we're in the process right now. I've got Senator, Representative Lowers' office working on it. We're talking to the state fire marshal to see if there's a way to change that around. Those of you that are familiar with natural gas generators, there is no lag time. When that power goes out, that thing switches over immediately. And I see people nodding their heads out there because I know they probably have them. Then that hospital could run for a long period of time. All right, that, that's about as far as I wanted to take that conversation. So we're in the process of looking at that to see if that would be a safer way to go. And I wanted to pass on to you that at the last meeting we had, we discussed all of this stuff again. And the one thing that came out of it is the same thing, Jeff, that you guys were talking about at the Cranes meeting today, the collaboration that goes on in this county from about 2008 and 2009 forward, when everything kind of went in the tank, we lost a lot of the ability to do the things we wanted to do individually. We began to collaborate. Cities are collaborating right now. We don't have these silos anymore. And that was the one thing that came out of the meeting we just had last Thursday on this, was that all the fire departments are now working together. All the police departments are now working together. Whereas we had some of those silos before, they seem to pretty much have gone away. And this area is becoming a region. In fact, there was a comment today made by Senator Peters' office that St. Clair County is beginning to look like the third largest city in the state of Michigan. So I thought that was kind of an interesting comment, to think about it that way. So you got Detroit, Grand Rapids, and then St. Clair County, because we're acting more like a city because of the region that we are in, as opposed to Warren, who is the third largest city that way. So I just thought it was an interesting correlation that he drew there. Okay, I'm done. Everybody else have anything else? All right, let's go to the highlight of the evening, citizens wishing to address the board. Carol Miller, you would like to talk to us about the animal control. Just a quick reminder, our ever-sharp, Howard, is going to be timing you at three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. 16 months ago, I stood before you for the first time and I asked for help. In that 16 months, the sheriff department has embraced our group and we've been working very collaboratively together. And the last time I spoke to you was right before Christmas time and we were going to be going to the Yale Parade. I'm happy to say we took first place in our award and we actually got $100. And that money is going to be put towards our volunteer group becoming a nonprofit. That will embrace the animal control to get a lot more grants, help things out a lot more. We can get things for the volunteers and we have a heck of a wish list. We have been nothing but positive. We have not looked back on anything that's gone wrong in the past, but have embraced everything and have moved forward. Donations to the animal control have soared. And I was told that the PR that we've been having, and I don't know how many of you are actually on social media, but we have one person that's been doing a lot of PR for the animals and animal control and the adoption rates have gone way up. The volunteers, I looked as I was coming in, we're at 198 volunteers that are active. Some of the ones that are kind of sitting in the background are waiting for summer. They have jobs that are keeping them from actually doing stuff now, but they're all willing and wanting to help. We've had a person from down river who has an absolutely wonderful rescue reach out to us to help us get our 501(c)(3) and go through that process, as well as someone from Combe County. So they're coming from around the areas to help us and we look forward to having you embrace us that much more than what you have and help us propel the animal control into what we want it to be for the citizens and for the animals. These wonderful people here sitting in the front row are just a handful of the more active volunteers and you'll hear a lot of stuff that you'll be very happy with. We do not protest. We do not demean anybody. We don't want anybody's job. We want to enhance everything and make you guys very proud of us and the county citizens to be proud of what we have for an animal control. So I thank you on behalf of the volunteer group.
Thank you. Ted Hendra, Animal Control.
Hello, how are you? Okay. A few, about two years ago, Carol said, "Be the solution to the change that you want to see." And she did that by starting out AC for Positive Change. And that group grew to over 1,000 members. We started a volunteer group and it's called St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control Volunteer Group. And as part of that group is our dog walkers. And they go every day, seven days a week, and they walk the dogs. They socialize the dogs every day. Stand up, please, everybody that walks dogs, please stand up and say hi.
Hi.
We started in November. We started on Thanksgiving Day. There were 12 dog walkers knocking at the back door on Thanksgiving Day at 8:30 in the morning. When Scott opened the door, he was shocked. There were four dogs for the 12 dog walkers. That group has grown to over 30 now. So, and also because of that, the dogs are not only walking the dogs, we're exercising the dogs, we're socializing the dogs. They're giving us two rooms when the roads are, or when the weather's bad, that we can socialize and play with the dogs in the rooms and work with the dogs. And we've started basic training of those dogs. Sit, stay, lay. So that whoever adopts those dogs will, the dogs will have some kind of an idea. Some of them do. Some of them come in and they're trained, other ones don't. So what we're doing is training them as much as we can until they get adopted. We teach and we work with overall ruling anxious dogs. We try to calm them. We get them comfortable. We work with them. And we network those dogs on the social websites. And as a result of us networking the dogs all over the social websites, we talk about them because we personally worked with them. We can talk about them. We have people that are interested in these dogs and they send us messages and they ask us questions. And a result, as a result of that, in January, the rate of adoption went up. In January 2018, threefold. Not quite. It was one dog short of threefold in Jan, compared to January of 2017. So it's working. What we're doing is working. We also network the stray holds and they're getting home quicker just by us networking and talking about the stray holds. They're getting home much quicker. Donations have increased, as Carol has said. And I happened to be at the library today.
I'm going to have to ask you to make your closing remarks now, please.
Okay. I just would like to show you one of the donations I received. I received five of these in the mail today. I'm going to have you take a look at them. They're $30 apiece. The company sent me five of them for animal control. That's just the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, gentlemen and ladies. Hi, everybody. My name's Shavina. I'm part of the Stand for Change group at St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control. I handed you guys this packet today with just an example. I spoke with Elizabeth Holt. She's the Director of Legislative Affairs for Legal Defense Fund for Animals. She proposed, she set this up for me so I could show you an example of what I spoke to you guys before regarding your, the Board of Commissioners policies that you have that's over, that's just a basic overview that tells the sheriff department basically how the board would like it to go. Attached to this is the sheriff department policies and procedures. Dated 2000, it was updated dated 2018, they're from 2016. I have the animal intake procedures. I also have the shelter cleaning procedure. And I also have the animal reclaim procedure. There is a procedure missing. If this is the facts and this is all, four, five pages is exactly all that ran by it. And you can look through this. This is very, very generalized. Where's the procedure for the volunteers? They want to do such a good job. They're in, they are in there all the time. I give every single one of these people credit for going in there. It's heartbreaking. And you know what? Where's the procedure that says and states, you know, how they run for, if they're going to allow the volunteers in there? The cleaning procedure, there's nothing changed with that. I don't, if I'm not mistaken, the volunteers aren't helping with that. That's still in the inmates. There's a way for the Board of Commissioners to tighten their grasp on this. If there is going to be no group coming up from the RFP, there is a way for the Board of Commissioners to simply tighten some of your already existing rules that could make this a lot better for everyone in the county, including the volunteers. So this is just an example. There's Amy, Elizabeth Holt said she would help for free for any legal advice needed for anything. So this change that has been requested forever and ever that the RFP everybody's waiting on, it could happen a lot faster by each and every one of you guys just tightening the grasp on it. So I hope that you really read through this and look at this and look in between the lines of what is not there. Some of this stuff is just astounding, to say the least, just the very basics of it. So I hope you take this very seriously and you kind of look into this a little deeper because this is how we can actually have some tight changes.
Just one quick question, Elizabeth Holt. Who is she with again?
She is the Director of Legislative Affairs for Animal League, Animal Legal Defense Fund. I always get that mixed up with the other ones, so I had to double check. Animal Legal Defense Fund. She sent this to me. Also, I have some other documents that she sent, but I figured I would just show you this as an example. As the monthly report that would be public from animal control would show euthanized, died in shelters, anything like that. And so this is just an example, so.
Is that a Michigan-based outfit?
What was that?
Animal Legal Defense Fund. Is that a Michigan-based? Is that a national outfit?
I believe it's a national outfit. But Amy, or Elizabeth is located in Michigan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Lisa Ray Olenbach.
Olenbach, that's what I said.
I go by the name of Lisa Ray on the social media group. Some of you may know me. I'm very excited to stand before you today and share with you all the wonderful changes that are being made at St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control. First of all, I would love to thank Carol for starting St. Clair County Sheriff's Animal Control Volunteer Group. I personally joined the group Thanksgiving Day 2017 and met about 10, 13 other volunteers at the back door to animal control. And like was stated before, there were only a few dogs to walk. I was pleasantly excited that we were given the opportunity to do so, walking the dogs at 8:30 in the morning, the adoptable dogs. That is something I never imagined the staff at AC would ever allow in the past. Subsequently, Carol has also been given the authorization for our volunteer group to make our own schedules and keep track of the dogs and cats. In addition, again, Carol, I take my hat off to you. You are a force to reckon with, lady. You are awesome. In addition, again, Carol got the approval for us to take the dogs from their cages, walk them out the north side door. And if they get dirty, we've been given the okay for us to use the hose, use the shower on the dogs if we need to. We don't want to put any dogs back in their cages with muddy feet. The freedom to interact with the adoptable dogs has made such a huge difference, huge difference in the life of these animals. You can go into animal control now and those dogs are not just plying to get out. Normally, in past years, when I would bring my grandkids, those poor dogs would just sit and bark and bark and whine and cry. That's not happening so much anymore. I have been visiting animal control for many years now, looking for lost cats. I lost one dog once. I've adopted dogs and it's all been so very sad. The dogs behind the glass windows would bark nonstop. You could see the want in their eyes, that is, the dogs. Oh, that is the dogs that haven't shut down yet. The ones that did shut down.
Excuse me.
Well, I'm sure that is something.
Excuse me.
I don't need to describe.
Excuse me.
On occasion, Scott would let me look for my missing cat in the holding area. Yes, the cats are dirty. I've got to cut it off.
They'll have to make your closing remarks.
I am so sorry. Who wants to give me three more minutes?
He's got the sheriff in the room. He doesn't want to.
Thank you for your comments. Doug Hunter.
You should have sat up front, Doug. Chairman Bowden, the other commissioners, haven't seen you guys in a while. I'm here to talk about the dog pound. I got a couple of dogs on that dog pound the last couple of years. I went and visited the dogs. I looked around, I shopped. I went all the way through the facility. It was clean. The dogs were well taken care of. I mean, there was some problem dogs in there. I mean, I live on a farm and some animals are not adoptable. We all know that. That's a part we got to play with. But the two dogs I got, they were great dogs. They're great partners. They're with me. I realize there's a problem with the cats. I mean, I got all my cats on the farm. I get them neutered, but they think because it's a farm, people drop them off. I get more and more cats all the time. Kittens, two, three weeks old. People drop them off. There is a problem with the cats. I understand that. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I think I buy, I go down to Sam's, the only reason I keep a Sam's card is to buy cat food. I buy three big bags every two weeks. I think they're 24-pound bags. Take care of the cats I got, but people keep bringing more cats. I mean, just get them neutered. Get them fixed. There's a job for a cat on the farm, but I don't need 100 cats. But the dogs, the dogs come out of there, they were nervous because they was locked up for a few days and they missed the human element. And that's important to dogs. I've had dogs all my life, many dogs, all types of dogs. And for the first couple of days, they're nervous until I realize that you're truly dedicated to them and then they dedicate to you. I dare anybody to try to go in my house when I'm not there. But if I'm there, they raise all kinds of hell, excuse it, but when I say, sit down, they're down, no more problem. And these ladies and gentlemen here for taking care of these animals and helping, I appreciate that because I'm an animal over from way back. I mean, I got cows and cats and dogs and ducks and I got all kinds of stuff. And it's good to know there's people like me out there and I really appreciate it. And I really think they're doing an excellent job at that dog pound. I mean, there's two sides to every story, no matter what you hear, right? You got the heads and you got the tails. But it seems the only time that something's made an issue is when the tails do something, but they don't consider the head, they just go off on their own. And I certainly hope that this board takes this in consideration, the way that is run out there. Because I'm, it is run good. All right? Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. There is none, so we'll go.
I'll just touch on something quick. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak. So about a year and a half ago, we started having a lot of the folks from the, you know, animal community showing up at our meetings and talking to us about improvement, so on and so forth. I just want to let you know that it hasn't fallen, as I've said before, in deaf ears. I've personally been to Macomb County Shelter twice to meet with the director. I've been to Lapeer County, I've been to Washtenaw County, and I've been to Genesee County to meet with the different animal folks and so have many of the other commissioners. One thing that has, that, and you hear different bits and pieces and there's not, you know, 100% on anything, but the one thing that I can tell you that is the 100%, all of these have built out strong volunteer-based organizations to assist them. So I do commend you with that. We will continue to strive to make improvements out there and I just, I really appreciate you guys stepping up because that is the one thing that we heard time and time again was the volunteers and the outreach and stuff really helped make a difference. And I know that you guys are, you know, working with them out there, so I do thank you.
Sheriff, did you want to address the board?
I do. I do think Mr. Hunter needs to check into some new glasses because when I stopped by his residence a few nights back, there was some animals out there in his cat food dish that were black and brown and had a long tail and they kind of scurried around. So I think you're being invaded by a different kind of cat.
Well, first, thank you, volunteers. Just a tremendous job. We're moving forward so much in part for your efforts and your time. And I work a lot of hours. You folks do it for free, so again, thank you. It is a team concept. It's a tiny staff and to have this many volunteers just is warming to my heart. I've been out there on some of the Saturdays and Sundays and folks are there before I get there. So very, very impressed. A number of things I want to comment on, but I gave you a animal control report two weeks ago here with just some basic statistical numbers that we turn into the state. And these are the facts that go to the state of Michigan for our record-keeping. You all have it in your packet and I've got copies to give out to anybody else that would like it. But I'll just highlight a couple of things. We put together our graphs and because there's such drastic change, we have 2015, 16, and 17 for your purposes. Only 17 goes to the state of Michigan. But when I look at our shelter animals euthanized, our numbers, in 2015, and I'll speak just cats, because as Mr. Hunter said, that is where the difficulty comes. We had 924. 2016, 497. And 2017, 73. And that is a massive, massive drop. When we look at our percentages, and we'll stick just to cats, 2015, 67% were euthanized. Nothing we're proud of. 2016, 46%. 2017, 12%. 10% is the magic number. We'll be at 10% in 18. No doubt about it, we're at 12%. If we had another month of the year, we probably would have got there. So we are right there within our goal, which was the 10%. And so much of this advice and change is because of our volunteers. I will touch a little bit on policies. We have hundreds and hundreds of policies at the sheriff's office, probably 200 in the patrol division, another 400 in corrections, plus hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of standards just for our corrections. Our animal control policies are being updated, as is the entire organization, and it's been a year-long process. We don't assign employees full-time to do that. We can't. It's in the middle of the night, on the night shift, on a Tuesday when things are quiet, they're pulling out policies, they're reviewing them, they're looking for best practices. But I will tell you, our volunteers at the moment are writing a handbook to submit to us on how they're going to interact with the animal control. Because it's not in a policy, I most certainly would not put them on deck and say, we don't want you out here helping because we don't have a policy. You do not have to have a policy for everything. It's under development. But what we do have is a strong group of volunteers. And when they submit their document, we'll review it and it may very well fall right into our policy or operating order or best practice, whatever term we need to put it on. So enough said with that. I will also talk briefly about the case, and I want to put it in public record, where we euthanized an animal by mistake. I sent out a lengthy email to everybody on the board with our timeline. And I'm just going to go over that just for a moment in the record because sometimes some good comes out of some bad. And this is one of those examples. In that particular case, we adopted out a dog to the Durant family. It's approximately 10 days later, the dog attacked their other dog in the home and bit the homeowner when she attempted to break out the fight. Very common. She required medical attention. That sparked a law enforcement report and thus we got involved. She voluntarily turned over her dog for quarantine. The dog was taken back to the animal control. The deputy sent an email, night shift, to the office manager. The dog was adopted about 12 days ago. It's in the back room. Contact her in the morning, reference our return policy. The next morning, seeing that, and this is where the problem was, the assumption was that this was a return. Because it was in a two-week policy, it wasn't a return. It was strictly being held for quarantine. Owners still had total ownership. When a dog is returned and it has bit someone, they are euthanized. This was a mistake that we thought, or she thought, was to take place. That message was in relay to our animal control employee in the back room. On that crate was a document that said, from the deputy quarantine. Also in his hand was an email with a conflicting order. This employee assumed the office manager knew more than he did, some extenuating circumstances, and euthanized the dog. That was a mistake. When we found out, the owners were contacted. We immediately sprung into action to make this right. We found them a new animal, a beautiful female American Bulldog, got it adopted out to the Durant's. We then started an internal investigation, and that's what we do when we have mistakes at our organization. And out of that internal investigation, we realized we needed a better, tighter policy, one that will require a signature when you turn your animal in. So there's no question whether it is quarantined or whether it is an owner give up. With that policy, that will prevent something like this from happening again. I will say also that employees were disciplined. I'm not going to go in any detail on that. That's an in-house issue, but that is taken care of. Because of this, now we will have better policy and this won't happen again. I will tell you also that I spoke with the Durant's and I spoke with Mrs. Durant an hour before the meeting. I will tell you that she has no ill will toward the sheriff's animal control. Nobody is happy this happened, specifically me, nor is Mrs. Durant, but she is at peace with the animal control. She also joined our volunteer group. And I think that is amazing. And when she came to the animal control to purchase her new dog, she brought donations. So I think we won over a supporter in this chaos that took place. So I think, in my mind, that is a closed chapter. Lastly, Shavina, I will only say, two weeks ago, you accused, you accused, okay, you accused my employee line. You said you'd be to my office. It's been two weeks, you haven't been there.
I'm waiting on that application so I can tie it up for you.
I can, I can figure it out. Just bring it up and come see me. Okay. All right. We're waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, moving back to new business, item 11A, the approval of county disbursements, January 2018.
Okay, moving back to, uh, new business, item eleven A, the approval of county dispersments, January two thousand and eighteen.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for January two thousand and eighteen in the amount of twenty-three million, two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents.
Support. I have a motion support discussion. All, uh, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Item, uh, eleven B, two thousand and eighteen Marine Corps League Convention Request.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars based on the actual expenses for the two thousand and eighteen Marine Corps League Annual Department Convention.
Support. Motion, support. Discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Uh, item eleven C, parks contract with Friends of the Saint Clair River.
Chairman Greitop, I would move to approve the two thousand and eighteen stewardship service agreement with the Friends of the Saint Clair River in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Heidemann?
Uh, I, you know, uh, we, we usually think of invasive species as perhaps being, you know, uh, animals that get into our waterways, whether they're zebra mussels or the lampreys. We don't usually think of plants as invasive species unless you live down in Harson's Island.
We do have a fragmities or two.
Uh, but, uh, this is an opportunity, uh, for us to, uh, look at our parks and identify invasive species, plants that are there, and move towards eradicating them. I know along the riverwalk, we're having a, a pretty serious problem with a plant called knotweed. And, uh, it, it's been problematic, so we can hopefully get some of those invasive species out of our parks. So it's a good deal for us.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rushing?
Just, uh, all the volunteers here and the volunteers there, it's great that this county has all these volunteers to help make this county a better place.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes. Item D, Wetlands Boardwalk Contract Final Change Orders.
Uh, Vice Chairman Greitop, I move that we approve change orders one through three with body construction for the Blue Water Riverwalk in a total amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars, six hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Support. Motion and support?
You gonna sustain?
Yes, sir. I'd like to sustain. Okay, we need a motion for, uh,
I'll make a motion that, uh, Commissioner Dunn can abstain from this vote.
Second. I have a motion and a second to, uh, allow Commissioner Dunn to abstain from this vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going back to the original one and roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Greitop?
Yes. Item, uh, E, Update Fee Schedule for the GIS Service.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the revised GS, GIS fee schedule.
Second. Motion and support. Any discussion on these fee schedule? I think this thing actually went down in a couple of places and it kind of clarified. It was more of a housekeeping move than anything. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Alrighty.
Vice Chairman Greitop?
Yes. Uh, item F, Resolution eighteen oh one clarifying, or ratifying collective bargaining agreement. Public service employees local ten eighty-nine.
This time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution eighteen dash oh one, ratifying collective bargaining agreement with the public service employees local one zero eight nine.
Support.
Motion, support. Discussion. Questions?
Last one.
This is, uh, almost the last one. Am I right to?
I got one.
Yep, getting close.
We have one more?
Three more.
That's what I said, three more. Okay, three more to go.
I heard you.
How many do we start with?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay. We're making progress.
We're making progress. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item, uh, eleven G, which is Committee Vacancies.
I'm sorry, I, I have eleven G and it's not committee vacancy.
Should be.
Yeah, it's committee vacancies.
Yeah, we made it, uh, yeah.
Actually, I had asked Kerry just to put this, this is necessarily an action item this evening. Um, we've got some, uh, we've actually have four vacancies on the Solid Waste Committee. They don't meet very often. We got a few things we're working on. We're probably going to need to get that committee formed here in the near future. General Public Township Governance, one environmental interest, and one solid waste. There's also in your information left at your desk, there's a sheet that explains to you what each one of those subtitles per se that, that these individuals can, um, be part of. So if you have any ideas on certain people, I have some in mind. Um, that we're going to have to work on, just filling those here coming up in the near future, so if there's somebody you're looking for, keep me posted. Also, the Brown-
Jeff, before we move on, um, have we talked to the planning department, you know, that, that works with us on this solid waste plan and even with our own landfill staff to see if they're aware of some people with these qualifications that might make good candidates?
Uh, no, I just, I just said, like I said, we're not looking to, we will. We're just putting this, yeah, we're just putting this out there for everybody's knowledge that we're looking, looking for people. And then there's also a brown field, if I'm not mistaken, right?
One opening on brown field.
There's one opening on the brown field. Um, many of you are aware that we recently received that additional four hundred thousand dollar P.A. grant. Uh, the brown field committee's fairly active, you know, as they get different projects come. I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, they meet on a monthly basis today?
Yeah.
So we're going to need to get somebody, uh, to fill that. District three, I'm not sure who, who's district three here? Howard?
If, if it, if it goes by County Commission Districts.
Yeah.
Commissioner Heidemann's.
I, I will look at that.
We need to talk and find somebody.
This is the application that, that also is in there for, for any of these.
Yeah, so just, just wanted you to may, be aware of, there's a couple positions that we need to fill.
Yeah, if it's in your district, I see if you can't find somebody and if it's a particular position for a business and you know somebody, uh, let the office know or get them hooked up. We, we do need to fill, uh, the one with the brown field, especially because of the, uh, the grant that we just got there, the four hundred thousand. And the other one, we do have some activity kicking up out at the landfill, so we're going to need those guys on that, on that board also. Okay, uh, no action taken on that one or no motion needed. Uh, item eleven H is Resolution eighteen oh two, uh, the CBA Communications Officers two thousand and eighteen nineteen contract.
Mr. Chair, uh, I would move the adoption of Res- Resolution eighteen dash zero two, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Communications Officers, P.O.I.A.M.
Support. Have a motion and support. Any discussion? Will this take us down to two now, Kerry?
It will.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, good. Uh, let's go to the administrators' report.
We have our first legislative lunch coming up on February twenty-sixth at noon. We already have a pretty full agenda, but if you do have any items you would like to add, please let us know. Those agendas will be going out, um, probably mid to late next week. The county's indigent defense plan revisions are due on February twentieth, so we will be submitting those, um, next Tuesday. We had to make some minor revisions to our plan. And basically, we had to take out the additional prosecuting attorney costs that were going to be part of the plan. Um, the Indigent Defense Commission did not want any prosecuting attorney costs in there, so we removed those costs and made some other minor revisions and that will be refiled, um, next week.
Kerry, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
My recollection of reading the newspaper since our last meeting, governor's budgets come out and they're already talking about not reimbursing us the hundred percent that they promised us for improving indigent defense.
That's correct. Under the governor's proposed budget, um, he would basically shift revenue that we currently collect, that we recoup for those attorney fees, and we would be required to send that to the state. They also want to establish a minimum funding level of a per capita amount for each county, so once those two items go into play, um, it will cost us several hundreds of thousands of dollars and we will not be eligible for any reimbursements. But that's on our legislative lunch to discuss, because hopefully that's not the final form. There are some legislative changes required for that.
It just, it just seemed even before they approved the plan that they promised one hundred percent reimbursement. They already have introduced legislation to renege on their commitment to us.
Right.
And, uh, they're not doing a really great job with, uh, county revenue sharing either.
No, no, there were some concerning things in the governor's proposed budget for counties.
Thank you.
Um, last week is part of the new bond issues that the Drain Office is doing. Um, Danielle and I participated in a bond rating call and we did receive our rating this week. Standard and Poor's reaffirmed us as a double A with a stable economic outlook, happy to report. And Danielle isn't here this evening, but she did a great job handling that bond call and, um, we're happy that we reaffirmed our double A.
What's the next one, a double A plus?
Yes, and, and then a triple A would be the highest.
Very good, a double E.
Um, we were hoping to have for you this evening, the PACE agreement for the Saint Clair Inn. Um, that agreement has been going back and forth between our legal councils and even right up until about five-thirty, we had not received a final version yet. I know they are hoping to close on their loan possibly next week, so you may be getting an invitation or a request to hold a special meeting next week if we get that agreement in final form from our legal counsel.
That it?
That's it.
Very short.
I'm going to receive and file the administrator's report.
All right. Second. Motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Um, any miscellaneous business to come before the board?
I just have two quick things I forgot to talk about earlier. Um,
Commissioner Bowman?
If you drive through the city of Saint Clair, obviously see the work going on in Saint Clair Inn, but if you see the boardwalk, that is getting tore up and redone right now. Our lobbying firm, um, essentially wrote the grant for the city of Saint Clair. They received a Michigan Natural Trust Fund grant, um, with a award of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, with a seventy-five percent from them. Kudos to SFA. Again, this is another example that why we, just reaffirms why we hired them, because a lot of these smaller communities just don't, to be quite honest, have the in-house expertise to handle these kind, types of things, so it's moving forward, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. Also, there was one other thing I forgot to touch earlier on DTE. Um, one of the things that, that they talk about, environmental standards. And when we had met with a reporter, they had said, you know, well, DTE's not compliant with the environmental standard of whatever it is, right? So we got to remember, five years ago, the environmental standard never existed. So what happens is they will come along and they will put an environmental standard in place and they will give you X amount of time to comply, no different than the Great Lakes. We were, we were an area of concern, we had sixteen or nineteen, whatever the numbers were of an area of concern. You continue to work on that, you pick those things off and then you meet your compliance. DTE is working towards compliance on the other stuff. So when you say they are not compliant, well, they were always compliant. When you come out and set a new standard, you become out of compliance and then you have a period of time. So if you hear that, "out of compliance", just understand how the in-compliant, out-of-compliant game works, okay? So, um, I just, I just, I need to put that out there.
I just, I, I just like to add something. Uh, I shared with our chairman and vice chairman earlier today that I was going to be late for the meeting because, uh, we have a really big project going on in Port Huron now. Hundred and eighty million dollar expansion of McLaren Port Huron Hospital. And, uh, I'm on the board and they had a special board tour later today. Kind of overlapped with our meeting because of the schedules of the doctors and some of our fellow board members. But it's, uh, really going to be a huge improvement to our quality of life here. Uh, we're taking, well, making a hundred and eighty million dollar investment. It's going to take a hundred and seventy semi-private beds or double occupancy to all single private beds in the hospital. There's also going to be additional operating rooms and, uh, bringing in more technology. Uh, it's, it's going to complement the new cancer center that, that's also been in operation for the past year. So I think it's, it's a really positive sign for our community and if Danielle had a chance to mention that to the bond raiders, I'm sure they would be impressed.
Commissioner Tamiya, in the total, you said like a hundred and eighty million, is that the total project? Because they have several phases that they're doing that.
That's, that's a total project. And one of the things that was really surprising to me is to take all of those rooms and convert them. They're going to be moving back and forth through the hospital over the next couple of years to complete that. Because we're going to continue to, to, um, have, have a hundred and seventy bed capacity. And we're going to have to take one area and turn that into, uh, private rooms and then move patients over there and then, um, demolish other areas and, and reuse them. So it's a, it's a, it's going to be a very complicated process. But, um, the, uh, grand opening should be October first.
Two thousand and eighteen?
Yes. Uh, the other thing I found really interesting, uh, talking with the engineers, they actually will complete it on September first. But in order to test all of these systems, and if you go through there and you look at all of the piping and electronics and, uh, technology that's in there, they have to actually operate it for about a month with no patients in those areas to make sure that all these systems not only work, but are completely compatible. It's just an amazing undertaking and we're, we're really happy that McLaren Corporation has decided that Port Huron should be a regional center for that, for that organization.
Very good. Commissioner Rushing?
Uh, just one, back to the alternative energy and I don't believe anybody's going to opt in as regards to the windmills in Saint Clair County at this time. Uh, it's been reported up in Lincoln Township, which I own some property. If you opt in as a property owner, this is a good tax base for the county and the actual municipalities if they were to opt in. But each property owner, if you opt in also, they're going to send you a check because the air goes over your property. If you opt out, they'll still continue on if your community is in, but if you opt out, you don't get a check. If the air's going over your property, they're going to, the, uh, whatever, uh, corporation is doing, the, uh, electricity with the windmills, they'll send you a check because the air is going over your property. So it's another big plus for any residents within Saint Clair County and also the townships that could possibly, uh, use the additional revenue.
As it currently stands, oh, Greenwood Township is the only area that has a sufficient amount of wind. There's sufficient amount of infrastructure in entire Saint Clair County, so if you think you're getting them in Berlin, if you think you're getting them in clay, ain't going to happen.
I thought they were looking at Lynn Township also.
It slivers. But the problem is, is the big one, the big domino is the Greenwood piece that has tumble. And that goes back to my thing. You can say a wind farm works great out there, right? Same token, you can't tell them they're going to have a wind farm. So when you go tell this alternative energy, it's like solar. They can ordinate you out of the solar business, they can ordinate you out of these windmills. So, so alternative energy, it looks great on paper, but, you know, you get to this point where people don't let you, let them, let them do it.
You did this also. You have to be within a energy place where, once you tap the energy, you can actually get it to where it-
You gotta be, you gotta get it out.
You gotta have power. Okay. Um, I just wanted to say once again, uh, today's, uh, Crane's Business Meeting was an absolutely awesome meeting. I think everybody that was there would agree. Uh, I think you could be proud of your commissioner. Uh, he had a tie on today and he looked really-
Not often.
He doesn't wear them often, but he had it on today and he, he really looked professional up there. It was good. And I also want to say thank you to Gino. Gino, stand up for just a second so that everybody could see who you are. There's the guy that's running our convention center and I'll tell you what, he put together a spectacular display today uh, that I thought was just, uh, it, it knocked the socks off of everybody there that was from this community and people that came- there that was from this community and people that came from outside of the community saw our convention center shining. So Gino, thank you for that. With that, I'm going to take a motion to receive and file.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move to, I would move to receive and file packets